Good evening. It is now six o'clock and we'll call the Planning Commission meeting for Monday, February 24th. Order, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abani?
Here.
Commissioner Holly?
Here.
Commissioner Schaefer? Alderman Parrish?
Here.
Mayor Nurban?
Here.
It will reflect that Commissioners Chorin, Barnes, and Stoker are absent. Thank you.
All right, first up, we have meeting minutes from January 28th.
Move to approval.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Minutes are approved. First out of the gate here, we have a policy discussion, resolution adopting 2025 City of Mequon Park and Open Space Plan. Recommendation forthcoming by the Park and Open Space Board on the 19th.
They did positively unanimously recommend.
Figured they would, but I thought I'd check. And further recommendation forthcoming from this body this evening. Any questions for staff? Has everyone read it? I read it twice. It's a lot. Commissioner Abani?
I just noticed that there is a name change for Community Park. And it is specified on one of the pages that Civic Center Park, and it specifies formerly known as Community Park. I didn't know how do name changes happen, or when did that happen? It happened as a part of the plan, but full disclosure, it's about to be a part of a much larger conversation where we'll see what that conclusion brings. Great, thank you.
Good, staff's on top. Commissioner Parrish?
Sure, this is a big undertaking, so just wanted to thank the Parks and Open Space Board and staff for taking time out of your schedule. This particular update included a few interesting things that we want to utilize, including the park's playground assessment. There was a great inventory in there, as well as a plan for the Catherine Kearney Parks, which I'm told we're going to be hopefully moving dirt this year, which will involve closing the west parking lot and expanding the north parking lot. So this wasn't just any average update, this was a very comprehensive one, and council appreciates all the volunteers. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission, or perhaps a motion? We just recommend this onto the council, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Then I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other comments on the plan, the comprehensive plan? Part of which will be overwritten by another comprehensive plan we're currently undergoing. For those that don't know, the plan we're talking about is the Civic Campus Master Plan, which is now underway with our contractor, Lakota, so lots of changes coming for 2025, so stay tuned there. Hearing and seeing no other comments, all in favor of approval, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? We'll pass it on to the council officially. Moving on to regular business, first up, we have Hiller Realty for Astrowoods LLC. The client is seeking a plat amendment approval to allow for an expanded building envelope for the properties located at 1511 through 1596. The agenda says 69, but there was a typo there, but it was noticed properly everywhere else. Astrowoods Court and 11620 through 11693 Astrowoods Circle in the Astrowoods condominium subdivision. We have people registered to speak this evening. Oh, it's on the next item. Okay. Take it away, staff.
So this project is for condominium plat amendment approval. This is due to private market interest in larger customized units, so it will see a slightly larger building envelope for units 25 and 26 and 31 and 32. Those are the last four units to be built among the condominiums. The condominiums were first approved in 2000 and then later amended in 2017, which also saw an expansion to six of the units' building footprints. Within the packet, there is a letter that shows neighborhood input, specifically neighbors' approval of the amendment. The proposed increases in size will still comply with the 25-foot setback requirement. It's noted in the report that we needed to confirm the lot coverage percentage change with the additional square footage that's going to be added. Since this report has been posted, we did receive that confirmation from the applicant. They provided that it's going to be a roughly 1% increase in the lot coverage percentage, so still compliant with the R6 and the PUD requirements set forth. Other than that, staff is recommending approval. There is additional information included within the report from the city attorney. And just to note, condition two within the staff recommendation has been verified at this point.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any last comments or questions? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Abani?
Aye.
Commissioner Holly?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer? Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Mayor Nurban?
Aye.
Vote passes.
All right, on to our second item under regular business. Eastbrook Drive LLC. Applicant is seeking a Building and Site Plan Amendment approval to allow for five two-unit condominiums for the property located immediately west of 11649 North Port Washington Road. We do have one member of the public here registered to speak. On this item, Pat Marchesi supports and wishes to speak. 1625 West Eastbrook Court, for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Pat Marchesi. I live at 1625 West Eastbrook Court. It's the development just to the west. So first of all, I want to say I completely support the approval of this amendment. Second, I'll try to be quick. I really want to compliment the staff. This is an outstanding piece of work. They obviously have worked with a very good developer, and they've made drastic improvements, which I believe improves the whole area. And lastly, if I could, I would like to compliment the Planning Commission. I know it is extremely difficult to work when you have an infill development in an area that is over 30 years old, and your consistent support for staff moving through these difficult things is greatly appreciated by us. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Always good to hear positive comments. All right, if there is no one else here wishing to speak on this item, we'll move on to the staff report.
So this is for Building and Site Plan Amendment approval to allow for building, design, and elevation changes to the five two-unit condominiums that were previously approved in March of 2023. The design and elevation changes will see gables being added that mimic building designs in the neighboring condominiums. Staff is specifically recommending that no one material be used on more than five units. The building materials mentioned here are within the report. There will also be a minor elevation change, and that will prescribe increase to the first floor and second floor square footage. The additional second floor square footage will allow for an additional bedroom, as well as a bonus room. And the first floor square footage increase will see just about 68 square feet being added to each unit's building footprint. This doesn't impact condominium's ability to meet the setback and offset requirements that are dictated by R6 and the approved PUD. Within the packet, there are the previous design elevation changes for comparison purposes to see, you know, kind of how that architectural change is going to look. Staff is supportive of this change because it presents more aesthetically pleasing architectural changes and represents a more cohesive neighborhood design as it fits in with the other condominiums of the area. So with that being said, we are recommending approval subject to the conditions, and the one to note is that no one building material be used on more than five units just to kind of allow for variation and, you know, alterations in design.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Or comments? Commissioner Abani?
So I have a question about that last part that you said, that you want some variance in the building. So there's only going to be five buildings, and each are two units. So basically, what you're saying is that they're going to have to have different colors or different materials on one building? Is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. I think that's what you mean.
No, each building should be unique in terms of its design, not each unit. So each building should be the same. We typically require three different models to be presented to the commission. We just, there are, most of our developments are larger than this. Where we have multiple different designs, with this one being so small, we just wanted some variation, but it won't be per unit, it'll be per building.
So then I have another question, because it specifies no one building material should be used on more than five units. And say you change that unit to building, there's only five buildings, though. It is, am I? It's 10 units, right? I think.
Five two-unit, so yeah, 10 units, but five buildings.
So do we need to change that number? The number one?
Basically, it's still okay, because you're allowed, you could have basically two units be one building, two units be another one, and then you'll have another. So you won't have a half a unit being done that way. So it still works out okay. It just maybe we should word it a little bit differently, but it still works out where they'll be, they'll have variation between the buildings. Yes.
I think I also misspoke on the last sentence, so good clarification.
I'm not the design expert, so I wanted to make sure I understood what I was reading.
Good to get it right, that's what we're here for. Commissioner Parrish?
Thank you, Mayor. Welcome to Mr. Oppenheimer and his development team. It's exciting to have a serious developer who's actually doing something with this site. If I'm not mistaken, this is the third or fourth development that's been proposed here. They've all been kind of similar over the years. I'm the alderman for this district. I try to do a good job looking out for my residents, both in Eastbrook and Astrowoods nearby. And communication's very important. The second, you know, the trees came down along the road, and nothing subsequent to that, there was concern. So every time there's a pause, I get a message. And so I just want to, I believe that there will be a lot of people that will actually watch this video afterwards, and I just want to make sure that we've discussed some terms and that we're all on the same page quick before we approve it. Overall, I have gotten positive feedback on the design, not only from staff, but from some other residents. I've heard no negatives on the design, so I wanted to compliment you on that. As far as terminology, can you just, this is probably a staff, and it might end up being a legal question, but what is residential plex? Are all the HOAs around it residential plex? And what, why does the condominium terminology keep popping up in here?
Residential plex is our zoning district, that's our R6 zoning districts. Instead of duplex, we call it plex. So that's who the definition is under our code, two units. In terms of the condominium, now he has a choice between doing condominiums or apartments. We can't regulate that. If he chooses to do condominiums, he'll have to come back with a condominium plat at one point, but we don't dictate those terms. That's up to the developer to determine. At this point, he's let us know that he's looking to do condominiums, and that's why we refer to it as a condominium, but there's no guarantee that it has to remain as a condominium.
See, I find that a little confusing, because it says that we're approving two, or five two-unit condominiums for the property, and so that's what we're approving tonight. And so are you saying that if they want to do apartments, or they could do that instead? Or what are you?
Approving the buildings themselves as either as a plex apartment or as condominium. Condominium is just a form of ownership. It has nothing to do with anything other than a form of ownership, so.
True.
So you're approving the design of these buildings. Whether they use them as condominiums or not, they still have a choice in that matter.
Okay. And I guess I would ask the developers, are these apartments or are these condos?
These will be condominiums.
These are condominiums? Okay.
We already have a condominium plat ready to submit, once we get to that point.
Okay, so they're not rentals? That's not your current plan anyways?
It'll be condominiums.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, so again, I haven't heard any opposition from the neighbors. I think they're excited for your investment in the neighborhood, and I think the city appreciates it as well, so welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the other commissioners? They do look nice. Do we have a motion? If not, there's one, motion in a second. Any parting questions or comments? Hearing and seeing none, please call the roll.
Commissioner Holly?
Hi.
Commissioner Schaefer? Commissioner Abani?
Aye.
Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Mayor Nurban?
Aye.
Vote passes.
Onto our next item, Birch Point Real Estate LLC. The applicant is seeking a text amendment approval to allow for showroom sales facility for the B4 zoning district. No one's registered to speak, so we'll hand it over to staff right away.
Yes, so this is proposing text amendment to allow for a new permitted use within the B4 zoning district. Specifically, it would allow for a showroom sales facility that would have different designer showrooms showing building projects, furnishing, hardware, et cetera, for selection and purchase. Currently, the permitted use section is fairly limited. That's listed within the report here to the following three permitted uses. These are typically professional offices and services, and the Design Center slash showroom is a little more closely aligned to the conditional uses allowed within B4. Those are also listed within this packet. Kind of, you know, that idea that there's an element of the business bringing customers to the site, typically by appointment, so that's where it differs from the permitted uses that are currently allowed. So with that context, staff is supporting the proposed amendment as a conditional use rather than a permitted use. There's also a map included with this packet that shows those areas where this would be allowed as a conditional use. Those are highlighted. Staff is supportive of this and is recommending approval of the text amendment. The language is also included here, and we just ask that it be a conditional use instead of permitted within B4.
Thank you. Any questions from the commissioners? Commissioner Schaefer?
Can we look at the map, just so I make sure that I'm? I think this is mostly?
Page 60 in the packet, but yeah, better to put it up on the screen.
Yeah.
Lovely PDF formatting.
Oh, you're almost there.
The south end is the storage facility area. It just, we kind of, yeah, we put the B4 on that because it was a very large building at the time, so it kind of fits in, yeah. But most of the stuff is to the north along Corporate Parkway.
Any other questions about the nature of the use? Commissioner Parrish?
Yeah, just to confirm, because some of these are business parks, so they will have covenants. So if we're allowing a showroom, and then the business park doesn't allow that in their covenants, I assume that would trump our code, right? And I was excited to see showroom, I mean, welcome, first of all. We appreciate your investment. One of the permitted uses in the LaO Creek corridor is showroom, and you could also have a warehouse attached to it. So we'd love to see development there that's permitted, if you ever wanted a warehouse with your showroom. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I apologize, I did not register to speak, I was.
Oh, you don't have to. You get a free pass as the applicant, yeah.
Do you mind if I?
Jump in at any time, sure.
Do you mind if I just provide more clarity about what I'm trying to accomplish and some of the minor concerns I have with the language that was recommended by staff?
Sure, let's hear it.
First of all, I really appreciate Jack and Natalie's time and effort they've spent with me so far discussing this development and giving me their direct and candid feedback. As I'm working through this process, I'm excited to bring this development to Mequon. I've been working on it for a number of years and evaluated many different sites in Mequon. In particular, this site is fit perfectly. This is going to be a site that has a collection of design showrooms, making it more convenient for the design community in addition to their clients and end-users for the residential home market. So for example, if you're remodeling your kitchen, instead of driving all around town and oftentimes to Chicago to pick tile, stone, backsplash, appliances, cabinets, you can visit one place and make design selections that ultimately are likely purchased via your contractor or designer and installed in your home. The benefits here are that it elevates the design community and brings more business locally. Many people travel to Chicago to make these selections, so this keeps the business here in Wisconsin. There's a convenience element for not only being able to, for mainly just being able to access these different vendors all in one place, as opposed to driving around either to Chicago or all around southeastern Wisconsin. And it's a way to potentially bring new brands and awareness to Wisconsin, because we're a relatively small market, and design centers are often a pretty easy selection criteria for new brands that are considering entering a new market the size of ours. The showroom, I want to make sure I'm following the zoning code, which is, which is why I met with staff, and they've been so helpful. So the, the showrooms are really for product selection only, where a majority of the purchases are ultimately wholesale. So the client ultimately picks the product and then is purchased by a contractor or a designer. It's not all sales, though, depending on the vendor. Also, a lot of these vendors request appointments, but often accommodate walk-ins if they have staff capacity. So since their sales process is more consultative in nature, they like to plan and spend time with clients in a more discreet and specific time band, but they will see new clients if they have staff capacity. So although I'm very enthusiastic that the staff is recommending this as a conditional use, just the clause "by appointment only" is a bit concerning to the overall operational plan, because the benefit of this development is that you can visit multiple showrooms in the same visit. So you can have an appointment, say, with the tile vendor and see a kitchen and bath fixture that you would like, but then I would be constrained to visit there because you don't necessarily have an appointment. So it limits the benefit of having all vendors all in one place. Ironically, a lot of my interested tenants don't want to be in a primary retail corridor because they want to limit an abundance of walk-in traffic, but they don't want to limit all of them. Ultimately, though, I think the language that includes that you're not able to walk out with a physical product is enough to distinguish it from the retail, a traditional retail environment, so it's not a Home Depot, it's not Ace, it's not even the tile shop in the Mequon Pavilion. You're really using this facility for selection only, even if it might have to be delivered via order. So I have a few other comments, but I think I'm going a little bit too long. I would like to amend that we keep the existing staff language, but with removing the clause "by appointment only." So to distinguish this from retail, which I understand is the primary concern of Jack and Natalie, you're then relying on this being a showroom only for selection, and then you're not walking out with physical products, both of which I'm completely comfortable with, because that's what they, what my interested tenants plan to do. If you would like to further limit and distinguish it from retail, I have two other recommendations, which admittedly are harder to enforce for the staff, but you would, we could say that the majority of the sales are wholesale, and/or that appointments are encouraged. How I plan to actually market this space and how the tenants plan to market their services is by saying appointments are encouraged, which is a nicer way of saying, "We'd see you if you don't have one, but we ask that you do." And that allows them to see the walk-ins as they have staff capacity, but also not turn people away, which frankly is why other developments in other larger markets are migrating to this model, and they're failing because they have an exclusive trade-only or wholesale-only requirement. So again, I want to really thank Jack and Natalie for their continued feedback as I work through this process, and I appreciate you all's openness to evaluating these small changes. But these small changes ultimately will have a big impact on the operations, so this becomes a successful destination for residents of Mequon, but also more broadly southeastern Wisconsin. Sorry, that was a lot.
Good to have the background and the dialogue. Well, since it's a conditional use, we do also reserve the right to monitor over time.
Yep.
So we could modify the language and say, check on it in a year after opening to make sure things are running smoothly. Is the, I take it the main issue is the request for the removal of "by appointment only"? Or replacing it by suggested by appointment, or some?
Encourage, yeah.
With appointments encouraged? I'm not sure we need much else. Is it fine as is, other than that?
I think it's fine as is. If we remove "by appointment only," then it would fit.
Would staff have a huge heartache if we did that, but then say, bring it back in a year? This will be the first, if it's kind.
Well, I guess, in a sense, you could almost punt a little bit to the actual conditional use comes up, and then put the conditions on once we know the more of the operations of the business itself. Leave it in there as just open to the general public and leave it for that, and then come back when he does apply for the conditional use grant, once we know more about the actual specific operations of this plan, then we can put a limitation on the amount of retail if we want to do it at that point. I guess it's kind of punting it a little bit, but it's, that's also an option. We just struggled, we did want this to be more a retail component, and that's where we originally didn't want the retail walk-in traffic. We talked a little bit about a couple other options today, and none of them really worked out too well. We want something that kind of limits it, but that's also enforceable, and that's where the tough part comes in with the language.
I know how these things go, though. You're having coffee Saturday morning, and you start talking about the kitchen remodeling, like, oh, we'll hop in the car and drive over to the Design Center.
I mean, it is, it is more, it is beneficial that they can't purchase anything from the site, so that does, I think, help a lot. So I'm about too concerned about it, but we were, again, we were just trying to differentiate between this and like the tile shop, where you do the same thing in the tile shop, but there you can actually pick your product up and get it to go, in some cases, not always.
Commissioner Parrish?
It was a fun meeting for me to be at tonight, and I'm not normally at these meetings. But so Kim has always taught us to look, you know, at the potential slippery slope. First of all, I think you have a great presentation, and I think your concept is definitely needed in our community. I wish it wasn't, it is more of a retail concept, and it should, I think, the customer should be encouraged to come into your business. I assume you want business. And I wish it wasn't all in office buildings, and I get that office buildings are maybe more economically viable than like an expensive retail center. And so the problem is, is we're watering down our code. This is why staff hesitated, and they put these conditions on because we've had this issue where the whole corridor has become basically the same zoning code. It's all kind of merged together, and that's why we hired a consultant to come forward with recommendations. I think staff's even reviewing that tomorrow morning with Economic Development Board. So I could see why they would hesitate to go add yet another thing in here that waters down the B4 zoning when we're about to modify it all. So I don't know, I want to support you. What type, are there any types of businesses you can envision that we're opening the door to that we don't want to be seeing in like office buildings by modifying this?
No, I think this is pretty specific to this type of use, and I don't, I don't anticipate any other potential developers doing this, except maybe this gentleman here, but again, it was just this issue of trying to like, again, keep the slippery slope from happening and limiting the retail. In fact, what you'll see tomorrow is other retail in this B4 we're probably going to take out as well, because we're trying to distinguish between the B4 as an office, use it as office and service versus retail. I think, again, I'm not as concerned about it, because, again, there is, if we could just elaborate that there is no ability to purchase stuff on-site, I think that does help a lot.
Yeah, the way it's worded seems to address that. So I guess I'm. So I guess I'm comfortable with removing the "by appointment only", because I don't think it's going to generate a lot of traffic, but we could put a condition to revisit it in a year and see how it's going a year after it's up and running.
Well, yeah, this is just a text amendment, so he'll have to come back and then once he comes forward.
Sure, when we get to that point and it's actually approved. Like, I think I'm fine taking it out for now. If we approve it, the actual CUG later, once the text amendment's in place, then we can put a condition on to check on it after a year, and if it's going fine, then fine. If it's not, then maybe we need to consider a wording change. But I don't think it's going to be particularly problematic. This is borderlining, while you're selling something, it's borderlining on service, because you're letting people see the product and interact with it to help them make a decision on what to buy. And they'll initiate the order there, but it'll come in a truck later somewhere else.
Usually via contractor.
Yeah. So no one's going to come out with bags of stuff where a truckload of tile, which would definitely be retail. Any other comments, questions? Or a motion?
I would move approval of this amendment as written with the change of striking the last three words. Yes.
Perfect. There's a motion in a second. All right, any other further comment? Why don't we also call the rule on this item?
Commissioner Urbani?
Aye.
Commissioner Hawley?
Aye.
Commissioner Schaefer? Alderman Parrish?
Aye.
Mayor Nurban?
Hi.
Vote passes.
Look forward to seeing the actual application and the eventual business that follows. Thank you. Thank you. All right, on to policy items. Now that we've gotten through the meat of the evening. The first is an ordinance to amend Chapter Section 58-41G of the Mequon Municipal Code related to the issuing of decisions by the Board of Appeals. Welcome, Brian.
Good evening.
Rare Monday night appearance for our attorney.
It's a little unusual to be on this side of the dais.
Yeah, yeah. Why don't you give us an overview of what's going on here?
Sure. So we've got two proposed text amendments or code amendments for you this evening, the first of which deals with decisions and the decision process related to Board of Appeals and the decisions that come out of that body. Over the last year, we had one case in particular that comes to mind where we needed, as part of the kind of preparing the decision, we needed to get a transcript in order to make sure we had things reflected appropriately in the decision. That process is just very difficult to do within the 10 days that the code otherwise provides for. In addition, because of the way that the meeting's scheduled, coupled with the council meetings and other responsibilities, sometimes it's just hard to get the decision done in 10 days as a result of that. So the code provision here just provides a little bit of flexibility in that regard. It authorizes a preliminary change from 10 days to 15 days, which should be more than enough in almost every case to deal with that. But then it does authorize the flexibility initially by the mayor and then by the full common council, if it's beyond 30 days, to have an additional extension beyond that. You know, say for example, we were involved in some litigation that required every waking hour of my day. You know, we might look to utilize that type of provision as part of that. So that is the proposed amendment that is before you.
Questions? Commissioner Schaefer?
You can think of just one case that would have fallen under this umbrella in the past year. It's the exception, right? It's by far the exception, not the rule.
Yep.
Makes sense.
There's always one or two that take a little more time.
Well, and I think you even said somewhere in here, like, in order to make sure you're doing the due diligence and it doesn't come back around.
Yep.
I think this makes sense.
Commissioner Urbani?
Do you think 15 is enough? Looking at the chart of comparable communities, it looks like a lot of communities are going to 30 days. Not that I want to see things drag out longer, but I don't also want, I think a lot of things take longer than we expect and they seem to be taking more time as there's fewer people doing larger jobs, maybe. And so I don't want to have to come back again.
No, certainly 15 days, I think for probably 98, 99% of the cases is more than sufficient. They're fairly unusual that we would need additional time above and beyond that. You know, quite honestly, when we adopted this provision a couple of years ago, it was kind of spearheaded, or the language was spearheaded by former Mayor Worth, who really emphasized the desire that, you know, hey, we're holding up people's lives when we're making these decisions. So we don't want to necessarily, you know, just give carte blanche at all, and certainly we want to try to, you know, make it as quick as possible to do this. One that I don't think I had in here... Yeah, in fact, I didn't even have it in here. City Milwaukee actually uses the same 15-day limit, and they have Board of Appeals cases all the time. And so if they can do it in 15 days, I don't know why we can't.
Are they actually doing it in 15 days?
Well, that is a question, too. But certainly, you know, I think the 15 days coupled with the flexibility that we've built in covers us for, you know, every circumstance that potentially could arise, so.
Yeah, the extra five days is still pretty snappy, but it gets it out of conflicting with other requirements, you know, prepping for common council meetings, which is happening at the same time, so it's... That's good not to make it, if you make it 30 days, they'll all take 30 days. Just that's the way stuff works. Commissioner Schaefer?
Going to make a motion?
Oh, perfect. You can always keep talking about it after you make a motion, too.
I would move to recommend approval of this change to the council.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further comments? I think those will be good. We'll provide a little relief to our process and offer a mechanism that puts me in the crosshairs for extensions, so that's...
We could certainly change that.
No, that's okay, yeah. That's why I get paid the big bucks. The crosshair is right on the back of my head, that's okay. Perfect. We got a motion in a second. Any further comments? We need a formal recommendation? I think we do.
You do, yes.
All right. All who's in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? On to council. All right. Policy item number two. An ordinance to amend Chapter 58 of the Mequon Municipal Code to implement provisions of the 2023 Wisconsin Act 16 related to process and procedures of certain zoning-related applications.
Sure. So the second code amendment before you this evening is really a cleanup-type ordinance. We had some changes in the state law that we're just basically looking to reflect as part of our ordinances here. The most significant of those, I think, relates to protest petitions and the ability to basically file a protest that requires a higher vote by the council in order to get things approved. In 2017, the legislature took the language out of the statute that allowed for protest petitions, figuring that everybody was just going to get rid of it and that would solve the problem that the Realtors Association had identified with getting things approved and the timing to do that. The problem is, is that most communities didn't follow suit. In fact, we here in Mequon proposed to remove it out of our code, and we instead changed it. We made it a little bit harder to meet the standard, to meet the protest petition in order to have that apply, but we kept it within the code. And I can tell you that most communities that I'm aware of did the same, or they didn't even consider it and they just left it in. And so as a result, the legislature in the last session decided that enough is enough and just passed some language that says all decisions of the relating to zoning by the common council have to be just a standard majority vote type situation. So that effectively removes any ability to utilize a protest petition as part of that, and so the proposed ordinance eliminates the couple references that we have to that. In addition, there are a handful of a couple other cleanup-type provisions. They really deal mostly with judicial review of decisions that are being made, typically decisions of this body of the Board of Appeals. Some council decisions, although not all of them, are done by what we call searchari review. It's just basically a review of the record before the body, where the court looks and tries to determine whether or not you did it right or not, as opposed to exercising their own independent judgment as part of the process on like a new hearing type situation. The changes that the legislature used basically mean that we're going to apply that standard to a handful of different situations that it didn't apply to before, and then it also provides for what they've classified as an expedited process that can be utilized to get yourself to judicial review for certain residential-based zoning decisions. Although I will tell you that in practice, that expedited process isn't any different than the normal process. Some lobbyists just decided that they wanted to make it sound really nice, so they changed that as well. So the code here likewise just adopts those changes to keep us current with the state statute requirements.
Any questions? Commissioner Parrish?
Thank you. I was active in revising the last round of protest petition revisions. I think removing this is like the most undemocratic thing you can do to like assault a neighborhood. And I'm like totally against removing protest petitions. It's too easy to get a simple majority for something that is so permanent and finite, and since like the beginning of time, it's been there. So are you really saying that because the state took it out, it's not even allowed to be in our code?
Correct. Basically, in 2017, the state took the language that was there that otherwise basically gave everybody the idea, hey, this is something you could do. They took that out of the statute. The current legislation, the Act 16, basically takes it the next step further and says that all zoning decisions must be approved by majority vote. So it eliminates the ability to have anything other than that just pure majority vote.
So it doesn't say you have to remove the protest? Well, I guess that's the definition of a protest petition.
I think that's, yeah, that's what gets it to the next hurdle, yeah.
I mean, certainly there is nothing that prohibits a, you know, neighborhood from putting together a petition that says, hey, we all oppose this. The only difference is that it doesn't do anything in terms of the requirement to the vote. Now, for the two council members on the commission, I'll just note that this also changes our overall vote requirement under the standard council procedures, because we need just a simple majority instead of the slightly higher six affirmative votes that we have under the code as well. So it changes things. It makes zoning decisions a lot easier. It is, in my opinion, just another example in a long list of recent examples of the legislature taking away power from local communities in order to, you know, appease their funders and their vested interests that they have.
Are there other tools that we could, from a policy perspective, that we could propose to give more power to neighbors? Like where if they protest, like there would have to be two planning commission meetings and like slow things down and give neighbors the chance to be heard and discussion to be had?
I think certainly, my gut is, is that you probably could do those types of things. It doesn't specifically say what's there. But I would just caution that the legislature is, at the same time as they're doing, you know, this act, for example, they, over the last handful of years, have changed the requirements on, you know, various other applications. You know, solar farms, for example, and cell towers, both. They've gone to a provision that basically says, look, if you don't act within 90 days, then it's just deemed to be approved. And so, you know, I think if too many communities start, you know, increasing the burdens, in particular on residential development, I think that you're going to see the Realtors Association start lobbying for changes that are related to that, and it'll just be a couple of years before the legislature says, okay, knock that off and, you know, comes with code provisions that say you can't do that as well. So we could certainly look at it, but I think it would be short-lived, most likely.
Well, practically speaking, of planning commission, you may have a first reading at council, second reading, you're almost at 90 days to begin with. So there is time in the process to get input, I think. It's just you can't elevate it to require additional votes other than the simple majority. Commissioner Schaefer?
How many times in recent history, and you can define what that looks like, has the protest petition been invoked?
I can think of two.
In like...
I'm not sure it's been since we changed the...
A year, five years?
Threshold. Maybe once.
Correct. It has not been, well, there was one that attempted to do it under the new threshold, but they didn't meet the standard. But before that, there were two in the roughly 10 years that I've been here that I can think of.
There haven't been, Matt.
Yeah, there's been a little bit more than that, at least in my tenure, but the old, the pre-17, you only had to get maybe one or two neighbors and you got a protest petition. It was a lot easier to do back then because of the size of our lots. But yeah, there was a handful, I'd say probably less than five since I've been here.
That's right. It's the government. They're here to help.
I was thinking of that for, I agree with Alderman Parrish, but it's good, it's relevant, I think, to recognize the scope, the historical scope, that this hasn't, it's not something that we've, that we're seeing on a monthly basis, thankfully.
Any other comments or questions? Or a motion? And you can make a motion, but you can make a motion in protest, too, if you really don't like it. Well, we don't really have much of a choice. We're kind of running afoul of state statutes at the moment, but we're getting a little bit of a... Oh, we've made plenty of motions under protest. I think everyone protested the approval of the FEMA maps. So...
I think the important thing, at least in terms of adopting this, is just to recall that while it is unfortunate that they're eliminating a tool that helps the democratic process along with some of these types of issues, it's even more of a mess when the neighborhood comes to you and says, I've got my petition and it's here in the code, and then the council has to say, well, it doesn't mean anything because the statute now says that we can't consider it.
Yeah, leaving it and you're almost giving false hope.
They are difficult, especially with our current requirements. I mean, it takes work to get the number of signatures that you need to get and to go through the process. And I think that that just risks, you know, alienating and angering the residents more than just telling them that, hey, the state, once again, took away our ability to run things how we want to run them.
And that being said, I guess we're going to move approval. Under duress.
There's a motion.
I will second your motion to recommend approval that removes local control over many matters, including zoning decisions.
Under duress. So you have a motion in second made under duress because we have no other choice. Which will now be in the minutes, so. Any other comments? Hearing none. All in favor, even if you don't like it, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, there you have it. On to council for final action. With that, we just have one announcement item. The next meeting is Monday, March 17th. Everyone able to make it? Alderman Parrish, want to chair the meeting? I'm going to be out of town.
I will assist Alderman. I'll check.
Fantastic. All right. Because there's someone to run the meeting. And with that, there's just... Oh, okay. Well, we'll have to, we'll have to work on conflicts. We should have some of the other members back. We should be able to cobble together a quorum next month, too. Okay, so we'll work on scheduling. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, second.
Motion and a second? All who's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're adjourned.